Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Auburn School Committee meeting for October 22nd, 2025. This meeting is being conducted in person and is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the Auburn Public School website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment: we'll create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Anyone here for citizens' comments? Seeing none. Special recognitions?
None this evening?
None, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from September 17th, 2025?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 17th, 2025.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi.
And we do have a student rep here tonight. Welcome.
So recently, we just had a fun coming, nothing very common. We have it every year. We had fun activities in the students, so we had a half hour at school for families on Saturday night, students, which I think a lot of people really like. They have fun with it, and a lot of people were in attendance at the dance. I worked the front doors, taking it. So there was that. A lot of sports are having their senior nights recently because the fall sports are wrapping up, coming to an end. Fall registration is open, or I mean, winter registration is open, sorry. Yesterday, underclassmen had PSATs, so while they were doing that, seniors had a workshop for college applications, so they got to work on getting some of those done because early action deadline was in 10 days. And that's really it right now.
All right, great. Thank you. Any questions for our student rep? Well, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you. Excited for your senior year, I'm sure. All right, thank you. You're welcome to stay, or you can go do homework, or whatever it is. Yeah?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, we are gonna, if that's okay, through the chair to move down to new business?
Yeah.
To the Packard Chog Music School partnership portion of this evening. We have Ms. Bailey here with us in case we have questions, but wanting to let the committee know that for a number of years, we offered private lessons at Auburn High School. It became kind of a beast of management, kind of heavy lift for folks to manage. And so recently, we were approached by Packard Chog Music School to assist with providing this to, and I thought that was, are we missing something in here?
This?
Oh, oh, here it is. Yeah, so they approached us in partnership. They partner with some other schools, certainly in Worcester. And the way it would work, and Mrs. Bailey, feel free to jump in, right? But they're gonna kind of coordinate the whole thing. So they would take care of registration, getting, finding the teachers. Everything would go through them. They would also pay a dedicated site manager just to supervise that area where the lessons would take place, which would be at our high school in the practice rooms, right, Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Yeah, that are there for that. And they would be dedicated time slots, so lessons wouldn't kind of be sporadic. They would happen at dedicated times, probably twice a week, maybe three times based on whatever the enrollment was. They would like to do this kind of as a trial, and what they would do is set it up for 12 weeks, with two of those weeks being strictly just for makeup lessons. So lessons wouldn't be made up at any other time, just at those two dedicated weeks for makeups. And I don't know if you want to come up, Ms. Bailey, with how many students you think may, may be interested in something like this?
Sure, so obviously, we need to poll the students and find out, and the families. Some of our students have been taking lessons elsewhere through other music schools, but one of the biggest things that this does is it provides access for our students. Our students are so incredibly, incredibly busy, so getting, you know, Suzie over to Worcester for a 3:30 lesson and then back in time for her 5 o'clock baseball practice can be often very challenging. So having the lessons here in town just removes that added stress traffic and allows more students to take lessons. In the past, we've had up to 75 students taking lessons when we were really at full tilt. Coming back post-pandemic, you know, we've had numbers around the 30s to 40s. So we anticipate, hopefully, over the, if this program goes well, getting back to having 30 to 40 students. We're looking at both small group lessons for our 5th and 6th grade beginners, so that they can benefit from seeing, you know, how do I put my fingers on the climate? Oh, like that. And then our more advanced students being able to take private lessons. So there would always be at least two music teachers having lessons at the same time, so there are two adult teachers in with the students, plus Packard Chog would provide another coordinator, not just the site manager, but a coordinator also to just kind of circle through the practice rooms just to ensure additional safety.
Plenty of supervision.
Yeah.
They set the rates, so there's a different rate, and then by time, so you can do a half hour, was it half hour, 45 minutes or an hour?
Yes.
Lessons, so they have the choice that way. And again, all the payments go directly through them, and the site manager that they would hire, that would be one of our people, would be paid through them, not even through our office.
Okay. Through the chairs, is this for band students or vocals?
This would be band, chorus, so any wind instrument. We were also looking at piano, voice, and possibilities of even offering guitar. Guitar was actually our biggest and most popular lesson program. We wanted to start small, just to see interest.
Awesome. Do they offer any, like, scholarships for kids that can't afford the lessons?
They do. Through their music school, they have some endowments. They actually started here in town back, oh, gosh, my parents owned a music store in the 2000s, and Packard Chog had a music school then, too, I think late 90s.
Yeah, I took music lessons at the middle, old middle school.
Yes, so they originally started in town, and then when Packard Chog Church, their relationship changed, so then they moved to Allstate. So the campus actually still takes lessons.
Oh, really?
Yes. She takes piano lessons. So we've had a long partnership with them. So, but they did say that there are scholarships and financially available for students.
Oh, great. Through the chair, no option for brass?
Oh, no, there's definitely brass.
Okay, there's brass.
Brass, woodwinds.
Okay. I heard wood instruments, I was like, no.
I will say, and Ms. Bailey can back me up, that I was part of the ones that pushed on private lessons some time ago. It was around some of the safety concerns, to make sure that there was plenty of supervision there, to make sure that it was equitable. I'm really pleased that Ms. Bailey kind of collaborated with these folks from Packard Chog, and I think this is a great opportunity to potentially provide better access for our kids to this in a way that's really, you know, well-run and controlled and safe and all of those things for kids. So I put it to the committee to determine if we can move forward with this partnership with them. And again, it's at the end of the eight or 10, or around the end of things, we're gonna reevaluate, we'll look at how many students participated, we can give you all an update to see if this is something that can continue.
Right. And it would start December? I'm sorry, December? Or when would this start?
I think they're, I think they're hoping to start at December 1st.
They're looking to align it with the trimester. So sometimes you have a student that does a fall sport, but then they don't do a winter sport. So for the kid who wants to take piano lessons just during that winter block, it's a great time for them to do that. Or if they want to prepare for districts, they could do the fall, and then they go into winter track. So there's no locking in for a year-long commitment and paying a lot of money, and then the child loses interest halfway through the year either.
Yeah, or misses a lot because of other commitments or whatever. So they were very flexible, and they are more than willing to collaborate with things if we think there's something that would make the program better, or, you know, that they might need. They were really excellent, really excellent.
So through the chair, like, so if my, if my daughter signs up for lessons, I could just sit right outside, and so it's not like they're, like, just in there by themselves, like, parent can be right there, so, not like in the room, but like, maybe like, right outside, so they can?
Yeah, 'cause I think that would be, is that okay?
That's what we always, we would do, we would encourage parents, you know?
Yeah, to stay.
So especially when, so they would walk their child down from the gym all the way down to the practice rooms, and then many of them would sit there and either work on a book, and then, and then take them back.
Yeah, so that's like an additional level of supervision there, that's nice.
Yep.
We have plenty of chairs.
Yeah.
Give earplugs. Especially for that French horn.
The French horn, yes.
Yeah, do we have any objections? I think it's amazing.
I think it's great, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I like the reevaluation piece of that. Let's just see.
Worth a shot, definitely.
I'm definitely gonna have someone sign up. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the eight-to-12 week partnership with Packard Chog Music School. Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you. Thank you for pursuing this. It's amazing. It's great.
We'll be in touch with what needs to happen next as far as getting things settled and all of that. Thank you, thanks for coming today.
Have a good night.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So we'll backtrack now to unfinished.
Unfinished business. So you'll see that, again, the policy updates related to fundraising are tabled. We need some more information related to PTO-related items, and so we'll just push that off a bit yet with any kind of changes. Things are going much better. We did implement the spreadsheet for folks to put in what they're having for fundraisers, which I really think makes everyone more aware of what's happening, and it's an easy lift for folks, so we'll, more to come on that.
Okay, so nothing's being held up by?
Nothing is being held up. Nothing is being held up, no.
All right.
Just an update, I did go to the pre-town meeting last evening to present the changed amendment in the warrant, you know, using the money that's left from the middle school to now pay for the expanded project at Swanson. Really got no feedback. Mrs. Stanek is at Finance this evening doing the same, because that should all go through that, through them, so no changes. They are back at work, which is a good thing. We were very discouraged to let them leave when things were kind of on hold for a little bit, because sometimes those people leave and they don't come back sometimes to finish the job. So yes, I think we're on a good place with that, so hopefully, we can move forward.
All right, great. Okay, so I guess next I will update you guys on the student rep. I think we need a different name, 'cause that's a student rep, so maybe our student school committee member, yeah. So we had two applicants, and hopefully, everyone here was able to read the essays that they submitted. They are anonymous.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's number one and number two. The number one was "To Whom It May Concern," it started with that, and the other one started with "Dear Honorable Members of the School Committee." So do we have any questions or discussions or anything?
No, I think one, I like one particularly because it looks like this person was on the cellphone committee, and that's a big thing right now, and I would love to hear a student voice on that, on that, as well as other things. She or she obviously is in, okay with difficult situations, so.
Through the chair, I like that as well. I felt like knowing that they were on that, that they took the time out of their schedule to be on one of the student committees means that they, this is something, like, this is something that's important to them.
Yeah, and I love that this person's part of the school newspaper, too, 'cause that's a whole nother kind of outlet that we might have access to through this person, so.
You're both very good candidates. So through the chair, that's what I was gonna say, they look both on paper.
Oh, my gosh.
Overqualified.
Both of them.
Yes, crazy.
I also am leaning more towards one, like, I mean, if you had to pick the best of the best.
Yeah.
I think one might have a little more time for us.
Oh, that's true, too.
Where the second one seemed so involved, not that they don't have good time management, the paperwork is the proof of that, but to add another something to that plate, I feel we don't want to overextend, you know what I mean?
I think that's a great point, actually.
But they were both, like, I literally was like, we flipped the coin, I, how do you got at this? Because they're both, can we have them both? Could they take turns? You know?
But you know what? On a positive note, last year, we only had one person, so I'm glad we have two.
Yeah. And they're both juniors, I believe, so maybe the other one could do it next year, or, you know?
Yeah, we'll see how it goes.
See how it goes. But it would be great to have a person kind of continue for a couple of years, but...
That would be ideal.
Yeah, so.
Would be.
All right, well, then, I think we need to vote on which one we would like.
And then we just tell Mr. DeLongchamp, and he will let us know which one that is.
Okay. So are we ready to vote on, it sounds like number one, then?
Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint student number one to the, as the school committee member, student member.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Great. I will reach out to Mr. DeLongchamp tonight or tomorrow and let him know the one that was chosen, and then we'll get the information about that student, and we'll go from there. Probably invite the student to the next meeting and get the ball rolling. I know, me, too. It's great. Yes, yeah, me, too.
Sure.
All right, thank you, everyone, for that.
Terrific.
Yeah.
On just as exciting of a note, the next item is about surplus materials. The last time when Ms. Pulver was here, she talked about two large kettles that just don't work well in her kitchens anymore, and she's looking for permission from you to sell or discard the two kettles. I will say that if the move is to discard, it will cost her about $200 to $250 to discard, and she can probably sell them for $200 to $250. So just sharing that, that's the information she shared with me.
Okay, you need an action on that?
Yes.
For her to do that, okay.
I'll make a motion to declare a surplus of the two kettles in the Food Service Department and allow the Director of Food Services to sell or discard the referenced kettles.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Wonderful.
Go high and try and make money. Come on, 300, we got you.
Yeah, barter with people. So the next item is earmark funding. So this was something Senator Moore's office reached out to me last spring, and it was a very short email and said, "Do you have any, anything that you're interested in earmark funding for?" And I wrote back honestly, and I said, "Well, what does that mean?" Because I really wasn't sure. And so what they said to me was, "This is typically where they can, districts can ask for things that would not normally be covered in budget," right? So in the list that I received, like, a lot of people asked for, like, playground equipment that you don't always get money for and things like that. So at the time, we were having a bit of engine trouble with one of the buses that we have, we have the two white buses that Rise and Evolve and Encore use, and our golf team and tennis teams as well. So one of the things that I put in for at that time was a 15-passenger school bus for $50,000 to $75,000. And at the time, we were also talking about a program called Magic School, which is very expensive, as you can see, it's $45,000. I said, "Well, we're never gonna have money for that." So they said, "Put in two or three things, and then we'll let you know." So those were the two things that I put in for. We were recently notified that we were awarded $75,000 for the school bus.
Oh, my gosh. That's great. Wow.
So with your permission, we will pursue that. Mr. Gregoire has already been looking. It wouldn't, we're leaning toward not something like we have now, but just a 15-passenger van for Rise and Evolve and for Encore, particularly Encore. It'll be a much more, a much easily, much more easily used vehicle. It's not, it wouldn't be as big, it's easier to park, you know, they go into the city sometimes, and they have places, it'll just be an easier vehicle for them to use. We'll still keep these two vans. I did speak with Dory Vecchio, Town Administrator, about insurance, and they would add us to their policy, so that wasn't anything I had to factor into the financial piece of this. Well, obviously, I think we would look for another white one, 'cause our other two vans are white. We'd get the Auburn Public Schools logo on the side, which I did factor into the cost of that. But with your approval, we will proceed and ask, formally ask for the money, and I'm assuming that we get it. It's not like a grant, even though you have to apply like a grant, but because it was earmarked for us that we would receive this funding, so.
So question, if we, if it comes in less than that amount, can we use the rest of the money to put towards the Magic School?
I doubt it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Usually, the way this works, and like, it clearly said in the award, and it was really a spreadsheet that was awarded everybody their things, and it clearly said, "For the purchase of the school bus, bus vehicle."
Right. Take what we can get.
Yeah, but I will say that the price, the price, the price we got for what he looked at gets us to about, like, 73.
Oh, okay.
So it gets us very close to that.
Yeah, all right, awesome. Well, that's great. Okay. Um, I need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to apply for, and if approved, accept the $75,000 earmark funding for the purchase of a 12-person van to be used for special programs in Auburn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we will, we're flying tonight.
I know.
Move on to teaching and learning report.
Should I slow us down?
No, no.
How many slides? About that many.
We got momentum.
So, well, provided the technology works, then we'll, okay. So as you see in your packet, I have both the PowerPoint as well as a policy for your consideration. So in May of 2025, the Board of Education from Massachusetts adopted some amendments to the Career and Technical Education, commonly referred to as CTE, program, namely around the recruitment of students and admission of students into their programs. So from May to August, DESI and the Board have been working on guidance, and then on August 22nd, guidance was released to school districts and to career and technical education schools. So since we received that guidance in August, which is not a lot of time for all these schools, middle schools had it somewhat easy, but the CTE schools had a lot to pull together around admission policies and pathway exploration policies for middle schools. So I'm gonna start with, I'm here to talk about AMS, obviously, but I think it would be helpful to give you a little bit of context. So essentially, what the guidance, what the amendments say is that for career and technical education schools, the admissions cycle has to start on November 1st, and applications are due between January 1st and March 1st. Schools must employ a lottery if they have more applicants than they have openings, and a school can either choose to have a non-weighted lottery, meaning that every single person who applies is put into a bin, and names are pulled out. If they choose to have a weighted lottery, there are specific areas that they can, let me move that up there. There are three specific things that they can utilize in that weighted lottery. So a student must have fewer than 27 unexcused full-day absences in the 270 days preceding their application, so that's essentially a year and a half of school. They can't have any major disciplinary infractions, and those are qualified as some very specific disciplinary infractions, and that's in that 270 days, 270 days, and that can't be anything prior to their grade seven year. And, and there's a variety of ways to do so, but they, some way to show demonstrated interest in pursuing career and technical education. So if a district, for instance, chooses to go with a weighted lottery, or a school, I should say, chooses to go with a weighted lottery, you know, as I mentioned earlier, everybody gets one ticket in that barrel, and then a kid with 27 unexcused full-day absences would get two tickets, somebody with no disciplinary infractions would get three, and then if you show interest, you'd have four. So that's basically how those, that is working, and so you'd have four chances for your name to be drawn, essentially. Questions on that piece?
What are, through the chair, what are some of the disciplinary infractions they're thinking?
So there are felony, there are specific felony infractions, so they are, what did I say here? So, that's not I wrote it in here, but basically assault of a staff member and a weapon. And those things have to be things that are on, on school grounds or at a school-sponsored activity. Okay, and so that's, those are the things that apply to the CTE schools. In terms of middle school policy, what we needed to do was maintain, develop a district-wide pathway exploration policy, in which we have to make sure that we're collaborating with our CTE school, which of course is BayPath, and that kids in grade eight have the opportunity to tour BayPath. And the other thing that we have to do is make sure that every year, we're providing names and addresses of grade seven and eight students to those schools by October 15th, so that they can communicate with families. And we also have to make sure that we don't, you know, hold a student attending the tour against them in terms of an absence. Our schools, our tours happen during the school day, so that's not something that we would do, but some schools have them at different times. I'll talk specifically about Auburn Middle School. So what you see in our policy that I brought forward is career exploration, so students having the opportunity to explore career and educational self-assessments and activities. And in an upcoming school committee meeting, Ms. Watson, Sherri Watson, and Matt Carlson are going to come and present and talk about some of the things that they're doing in grade six through eight. The state has actually put this thing out called MyCap, it's been out for a while, but it's around career exploration and different ways that students can set goals for themselves, and that's a big part of what guidance is doing with students, to help them see different careers and different pathways and opportunities. Again, looking at kind of that college career and life area. So I mentioned this earlier, but every year, we must share physical and email addresses of all grade seven and eight students. We have to make sure that our students are aware and their families are aware of events at BayPath. And finally, you know, in, in compliance with what the state regulations are, that we're sharing information around attendance and discipline in those areas that I mentioned previously. So if you have an eighth grader, you may be aware that some of these things have already happened. So on the 14th of October, so last week, BayPath staff presented to our grade eight students, and just today, grade eight students went to BayPath for a tour. Then in November, November 1st, as I mentioned earlier, the admissions portal opens to students, for those students who are interested in applying to BayPath. In January, counselors remind students of the application process and deadline, and then in April, BayPath communicates acceptances. So that's, you know, the nuts and bolts of what this policy is, and I tried to organize that in this document to kind of highlight where we're at and the timeline and how all that stuff looks, so. Questions?
Through the chair, is it also, I don't know if you'll know this, 'cause it's at the BayPath level, but is there also a lottery for this, the career pathways they get into?
I actually don't know that.
So like, you know how freshmen, they wanna, they give their top four or something?
Yeah, I'm not aware.
I think from my understanding, they pick their top three, or top two, and then based on that, I think it goes by, you know, based on they, like, do an exploration of each?
Yeah, and right now, it's based on.
I don't think it's a lottery, though. I think it's based on, like...
That's not a lottery. That's based on their, it's based on their performance in the class.
Yes, and I think it's also based on, like, the teacher's...
Based on, and the exploration, I should say.
Yeah.
So that's what they use, so they get...
That'll stay the same.
That stays the same. This is really about, it's a couple of things, right? So there were public schools that were...
And that will implement this year for our eighth graders?
Yeah, we've actually always colla, we've, we've always done, I think, other than the MyCap, you know, but, right? I think we've always done most of this.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know that the past several years, we've definitely been doing the tour. I'm not sure how long that we've, everybody's had the opportunity to go, but that is definitely a big business.
We've done the tour for a while, and now when they do go to tour BayPath, not that it matters, but BayPath pays for the bus to bring them there, too. We don't pay for that, so.
Through the chair, I already got a mailing from them, because my child's in seventh Because my child's in seventh grade, so I already got like a little postcard saying like, "Open house." So, I mean, obviously, they have my address, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we provided that. I can't remember what the date was, but yeah.
So we have collaborated with them for a number of years now. So this isn't a big change for us in any way. It's just formalizing it, and then we have to submit it, right?
Yes, it has to be submitted by November 1st. And as Dr. Chamberlain said, we have, it seems as though we've had a very strong relationship with BayPath. And there definitely are public schools that I have heard that, for whatever reason, don't provide access. And so that's what, really what this is designed to do, is to make sure that kids and parents know about their options.
Through the chair, can parents opt out if they don't want their address shared?
They can. Yes, yes, they can.
Wasn't sure if they could do that.
Yep.
Cool.
So I guess I'm a little confused on the selection process. Are we supposed to decide if we want non-weighted lottery?
No, that's Bay, BayPath does that. I was just giving you a little bit of information about what that looks like on their end. No, so, and, and they have, they are, you know, if interested, BayPath is, is utilizing a weighted lottery. So, meaning that if a kid has less than 27 absences and if they meet that discipline thing, then they will get additional weight in that lottery.
So I don't like that, but I guess there's nothing we can do about that.
That's the policy to write.
I think some of the kids that have the most problems need a trade, need to go to a trade school, so. Whatever.
Through the chair, this is the first year they're doing the lottery?
I think they've done a lottery.
No, they've been doing it.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, but they, they used to also have interviews.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it was a bit more selective.
Gotcha.
So this is taking a little bit of that off, not much, I don't think, for BayPath, but somewhat.
I do believe they've always had a weighted lottery, though, because we've always had to submit behavior forms.
Cool.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say to your comment, Jesse, is I think, and, you know, I know very little about BayPath, but I think that, I, I think one of the things that this does nicely is get some of the other pieces that were entering into people's decision-making out. So it is, it is, you know, they are limited to two major disciplinary infractions, whereas before, let's say you got suspended for, I don't know, a variety of, yeah. Yeah, 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 that can't be held against you in this case, but, yeah.
So opening it up to those kids that might need the extra.
Yeah.
So this is a two-pronged thing. We have to do our part about saying, "We're going to expose kids to this." But on the other side, they have to write their own policy on this whole selection process. And so it's a, it's, it's.
And we don't have to see eye to eye on it.
Correct.
Yeah, it's theirs.
Correct, it's theirs.
Okay. Um, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school pathway exploration policy as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Right, and we don't have Mrs. Stanek here, so business and financial, I guess you're doing it.
It is, yes. So she has provided a budget transfer dated October 22nd, 2025, between the same series, for which she is seeking your approval.
Any discussion?
Sounds great.
Seeing none, take, make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfer dated October 22nd, 2025, as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's vote. We do not need executive session.
We do not.
So need a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.